So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Matthew, please join me in for the pledge of allegiance in a moment to sign.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It don't take much to get you around.
Mr. Nichols, we have some recognitions?
Yes, we do have several recognitions tonight, and we're very thankful to start out the year with these. As you know, we've been doing our senior of the month now for several years. Dr. Scales is going to come up and present them along with some of our others.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm going to do the Mecklenburg County Public Schools seniors of the month. The first student that I'll be recognizing will be Dale Sturdivan.
Will you please go forward?
I'm going to briefly read his bio, and it reads, "Blue Stone High School's September seniors of the month is Dale Lelain Sturdivan. He's the son of Dale and Dominique Sturdivan and resides in Chase City, Virginia. Dale is a candidate for an associate's degree from Southside Virginia Community College upon graduation, in addition to meeting all of his requirements for high school. He currently attends the STEM strand of the Governor's School of Southside, Virginia. Dale remains busy as he is a member of the Blue Stone Barons football team, wrestling team, and soccer team. He excels athletically and serves as a leader in sports, as he is the football team captain and quarterback. He is also a member of the Beta Club. Outside of school, Dale is seen working in the summers at Okonichi State Park. Aside from working and playing sports and studying, he lacks computer programming, writing code, physical health, and game making. Dale plans to attend the United States Naval Academy to obtain a degree in cyber science. He plans on becoming a pilot serving the United States Marine Corps." Again, Dale Sturdivan. My next recognition for tonight will be Kevin Taylor from Parkview High School. Parkview High School is proud to announce the September senior of the month, Kevin Taylor. Kevin is the son of Mr. Marvin and Mrs. Nancy Allen Abreasy. Kevin is a gentleman with proper manners and impeccable behavior. His academics are strong, and he applies himself in a way that guarantees excellence and success in all that he does. Kevin is currently enrolled at SVCC in the Associate's Degree Program and has a 3.4 GPA. He is a four-year member of the Parkview Dragons Football Team and is a three-year member of the indoor and outdoor track teams. He is also an active member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes at Parkview. In the community, he occasionally plays piano in his church and is the eldest member of the church's youth group. After graduation, Kevin plans to attend a four-year university to pursue his dream career of being a sports physician. Kevin Taylor. Want me to go and do the others?
Let him get the picture.
That's fine.
And as it's the first of the year, I'd like to just remind all of the recipients tonight that at the end, we'd like for them to come back up so that the school board members can recognize them individually.
Next, I'd like to bring forth Kellyanne Tyner, and she attended the summer residential governor's school from Blue Stone High School. And after I read my remarks about her, then she'll speak to you all briefly about her experiences, which was quite awesome in this wonderful program. During the months of June and July for three weeks, Blue Stone High School's junior Kellyanne Tyner attended the summer seven residential governor's school for visual arts and performing arts at Radford University. This program provided gifted high school juniors and seniors with intensive educational experiences in visual and performing arts, humanities, mathematics, science, and technology, or through mentorships in the marine science, medicine, health sciences, or engineering. Each summer, the summer residential governor's school allows students to live on a college campus or university for up to four weeks during the summer. During this time, students are involved in classroom laboratory work, field studies, research, individual and group projects, and performances, as well as seminars with noted scholars, visiting artists, and other professionals. Kellyanne is with her mother, Mrs. Keenan Tyner Smith, and her future goal after high school is to attend the University of Virginia to study pre-med. And this is something that was quite interesting today because Kelly, when I spoke to her, she stated that her opportunity this summer made it for her the best summer ever. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly for her additional remarks.
My name is Kellyanne Tyner, and I had the privilege to spend a month of my summer at Radford University, at Radford University for the Governor's School of Humanities and Visual Performing Arts. I was in the humanities branch of the program and took four classes a day every weekday in July. I was very nervous when I was first dropped off and left alone. I did not really know how to strike up a conversation with anyone, even though people were everywhere. When I met my roommate, we became fast friends, and I stuck to her side for about an hour until it was time to go to the auditorium for orientation. I knew from the front door of our, from the front of our door, that our roommate and I had separate counselor groups, so I knew at some point we'd be separated. When I got to the auditorium, I found what group I was in and sat next to them. Immediately, we all started introducing ourselves amidst a loud environment. During the orientation, the head of the governor's school, Dr. Wayne Gallup, talked a lot about how life-changing this experience was going to be. Something that really stood out to me later on was when he said, "Look to the people who are sitting next to you, your right and your left. These people could become your lifelong best friends." I remember looking to my right and left, smiling, giving thumbs up, not really paying much attention to it. However, looking back, I was in fact sitting next to two of the five best friends I made at the governor's school and still keep in touch with today. Truly, being at the residency governor's school has been a life-changing experience. During classes, I had interesting discussions with vastly different people with all different backgrounds. I learned some great life skills such as how to make new friends without knowing anyone around and how to better manage my time on my own. I also expanded my knowledge in other academic areas, such as learning more about the health, humanities, and ethics in medicine, as well as exploring more about the polarization in today's political climate. Thank you so much for letting me have this experience. It was amazing and the best summer of my life.
and Faith Tolliver, who attended the STEAM camp this summer. Will they come forward at this time? This summer, three Mecklenburg County Public Schools students attended a two-week STEAM camp, which represents science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. It was held at Kensington Forest School. These students engaged in curriculum ranging from anatomy and physiology to human health and nutrition to ecology and the environment. They excelled at hands-on, project-based approaches that defined STEAM, the STEAM curriculum, and were highly effective contributors and leaders in peer groups comprising of 15 other students from around the region. Our students had the chance to do lab experiments under the tutelage of physicians, lab specialists from Central Southside Community Hospital. At the Edward I. Gordon Clinical Simulation, Correctional Simulation Learning Center as part of Longwood University School of Nursing, they assisted in a virtual operating room with obstetricians in a delivery room setting. The camp director, Mr. Paul Zanowski, said that our students were loved by the teachers of the camp, and they were excellent, positive, and productive participants. And again, I want to recognize our three students. It was Taryn, Faith, and Javion, unfortunately was not able to make it here for Mecklenburg County Schools. Do you have anything you want to add? You have anything you want to add?
It was a great experience, and my favorite part was going to the hospital.
Okay.
Good to have it as a favorite experience.
Okay, well, good. Thank you. Go ahead and get your picture in the side there, okay? Thank you, that's all I have.
And we would like for all of the students to come back up to the front so that we can congratulate them. This year, and with all years, school board members that have been active with the School Board Association with various training programs that have been going on or other components have been, are being recognized, and tonight, we have several that will be recognized for their participation. Award of Distinction goes to Mr. Lindell Palmer for his work. An award of recognition goes to Mr. Ritchie. An award of recognition for the work goes to Mr. Sturdivan. An award of honor goes to Mr. Honeycutt with a gold bar for his work. An award of distinction with a starfish award goes to Mrs. Garner. An award of recognition goes to Mr. Campbell. And an award of distinction with a starfish goes to Mrs. Bailey. Congratulations to all the board members for their work with the School Board Association tonight. Thank you. And shall I go on? Okay. For my report tonight, the first thing that I wanted to cover is that last Monday was a day that I will never forget in my lifetime, because as everyone knows, we had the storms that were, hurricane storms that were forecast to come through on the Thursday and Friday before, which thankfully, we did not get the blunt of as had been expected, although we are still feeling very sorry and reaching out with prayers and thoughts and hands of hope and support for those in North Carolina and South Carolina and other areas that were hit so hard. But then, as the weekend went on, we were expecting a little more than heavy rains to come through on the other part of it, and instead, on that day, we had significant tornadoes and other things that came through. At the same time, we had the board of supervisors hold a special meeting for the purpose of consideration of purchasing the property that we have been working on for so long as consideration for the building of the new schools, and in a relatively brief amount of time, with some questions among them, reports by the property committee that were certainly reported on by the newspapers, they actually did vote to purchase the property that has been considered, under consideration for the new schools to be built on, and it was a vote of support for the work that everybody has been doing for the last two and a half years. Additionally, they voted, they took a vote to go ahead and to approve the $120 million for the property, which was necessary for us to move ahead with the architects to build what we have identified so far as being necessary. So with that in mind, it is our responsibility tonight to bring to this board the vote that you will need to take, the action that you will need to take at the beginning of our action items to receive and to accept the board of supervisors' recommendation for the purchase of the property. It will not be necessary for us to approve the budget because we've already put that piece together, but the receiving of the property will be necessary. So I bring that to your attention, and if you have any questions or thoughts about that, then now would be the time for us to discuss it. Beyond that, I would also like to have Mrs. Ann Taylor Wright come up for a presentation that we are very excited about, related to the new Southern Virginia Food Markets, Makers' Market, SOVA Food Makers' Market, an opportunity for our children and students as they go on through our environmental science program, which we are very excited about.
Thank you so much for having me. Mr. Seifers had asked if I could come and present this program to all of you so you could get a better idea about it. We are the Southern Virginia Food Hub. The actual brick and mortar location will be known as the Southern Virginia Makers' Market. It does get a little confusing with the two names. And as you can see, our motto is creating successful agribusinesses in our community while preserving the heritage of our family farms and local cuisine. So just briefly about me, and this is how all of this got started, this big idea, I grew up on a small family farm. Our kids are actually the sixth generation to be there on that family farm. Over the years, we've raised hogs and cows, chickens, turkeys, ducks, lambs, rabbits. I'm a terrible produce gardener, but I can raise anything animal-wise. And you see, that's our daughter Taylor at the bottom, son Jack at the top, they attend Lake Cross Elementary, and this gentleman in the tuxedo holding a chicken, because that is a traditional farm prom picture. This is our oldest son, Michael, who is currently in the United States Navy, shout out. He is on his first deployment on the USS Decatur, somewhere in the middle of the Pacific right now. So in direct marketing, all of this meat products at the farmers' markets, I realized real quick, you can't make a living five hours on a Saturday morning. So got to go to some of the other farmers, said, "You know, we need a local food grocery, local food community kitchen where the farmers could take their products, turn them into value-added products, and make more money off their farms." So I went to the local planted district with this big idea about five years ago, and Deborah looked at me, Deborah Gosling with the planted district, and she said, "Ann, this is a community project. You don't need to finance it. You need to write grants for it." I said, "Well, okay, how hard can that be?" Well, that was five years ago. We are finally fully funded. These are some of the grant agencies you see here that have been very, very supportive of us, as well as the town of South Hill. So what the Food Hub is, currently, we have 110 small farms, primarily in the eight outlined counties. I'll get the pointer worked. That you see there, and you see, South Hill is right in the center of it, and that's going to be the hub of our Food Hub. We have anything from any produce you can imagine, honey, artisan foods like ferment cheese, goat cheeses, meat products, any local food you can imagine is there. This is our new logo for the actual Makers' Market. We relocated it 100 West Danville Street in South Hill, right beside the Colonial Theater. And that's a picture of it, and that's going to be the layout. This is actually the classroom that can also double as a dinner location, and we'll get to how this can all tie into with all the students in a minute. This is just the layout of it. This is the main entry door. All of this is the local food grocery. These are refrigerated and freezer deli cases. These are merchandising tables. This is the actual deli where you can pick up ready-to-eat meals made from the local food products. This is a dairy processing room, the only one in the state, possibly the country, that we know of. It's where you can bring in the local milk that's been milked under inspection, make butters, soft cheeses, ice cream, add in the local herbs, local berries, which is all kinds of local goodness. This is the actual kitchen part, and that is a 26 by 14 walk-in cooler and freezer. So I went through the basic presentation, and everything that has the green bubble is how it's going to relate to the schoolchildren and ways that they can benefit from this. So the biggest thing, we want to increase the profits of our small local farmers and actually make it viable for them. We want to make Southern Virginia synonymous with good food, kind of how Hanover has the tomatoes, Vidalia has the onions. Well, we have it all. We have these great small farmers, we have great cooks, we're going to market it all together. We also want to instill a love of local healthy food in our children and our community. So within the local food grocery that I mentioned, there will be refrigerated display cases. The thing we envision is to have raised by Mecklenburg County students, especially when you get into the new school complex, and we'll have even more ways to raise more food with the greenhouses and such, then the children can actually plant, they can plan for what they need, sell to the Food Hub, and they can actually see a profit coming back in and how it works, how they put in the work, they make the money. One of the other parts of this project is going to be ready-to-eat meals, where we take whatever's in season, kind of how Grandma did it, what's in season, that's what you're going to eat. What you have extra, you put up for later. The ready-to-eat meals, you'll be able to pick up casserole-style dishes from one to 10 servings, however much you need for your family, and at least once a week, I would like to see it focused around, you know, this is the Mecklenburg County student-grown dish of the week, you know, it features their collards, or their kale, or chicken, or whatever the new school complex can do. We're going to have lots of educational classes, cooking classes, food preservation, canning. A lot of these things are a dying art, it's really not home ec anymore, but this will be a place that kids can come to learn these actually very valuable, lost arts. One other idea we had was children being able to get off the bus there at the Food Hub, prep a meal, the older kids, the high school age, learn a life skill. So you're learning knife skills, you're learning a cooking skill, prep a meal, and then take it home to the family that evening, so you, you know, this child has learned a valuable skill and carried home a nutritional dinner. Also need more farmer's school visits. This is several years ago at South Hill Elementary. The kids loved it. I took in a red hen and read the little red hen, and most of these children had never seen a chicken before. So having 110 farmers, not all of them want to carry livestock into the schools, but some of them do. They do want to share the love of what they do with our children. I think the little boy thought I was going to drop the eggs on him. That was so cute. The turkey, there is nothing any more fascinating to children than when a turkey poops. Just so you know, we learned that. That was hilarious. That was the highlight of their day. One of the, this really, not only the ag students and the culinary students, but it could even go out to the marketing students and the drama club. One of the things that we're partnering with the Colonial Theater is doing character dinners during, we'll start with Scrooge, and one of the meals, the Friday night performance, you'll have a character dinner where the actors will actually come in, in character, in costume. The meal will be themed around, you know, 1850's English fare, and we'll do that for each of the Colonial performances. This is another idea that the schools could use. Culinary students could actually prepare the meal, have the marketing students market it, maybe they use some of the foods from the ag students, and then the drama club does the character dinner. There's, options are endless with this. We're also planning to hold tasting events in that, the classroom slash dining room, where the children could showcase the things that they have grown. And see, collard greens are very good, especially stuffed with ferment cheese. That's my eight-year-old. This is actually, she's a middle school student in Mecklenburg, and these two, that's my two. I don't know about the knife skills with a six-year-old, I probably didn't think that through. We didn't lose any fingers. There are multiple grant opportunities with the Farm-to-School Program. I've spoken with your nutritional director, and Mr. Seifers and I are going to talk some more about different grant opportunities that can benefit both the Food Hub and the schools. We also, we're working on a pilot program now with Greensville County, with some of our farmers supplying the Farm-to-School Movement. That's a really big push now with the USDA, and I would really like for the Food Hub to work more with Mecklenburg County with that, keeping more of our food dollars here in Southern Virginia as opposed to the western end of the country and other countries. These are some of the futuristic plans. The commercial freeze dryer is a big portion of this. The majority of our harvest season for our produce in this area is when school is not in season. This commercial freeze dryer is, allows the production of 1,000 pounds of produce at a time. Freeze drying is completely different from dehydration. It actually holds 97 to 99% of nutritional value, and it doesn't look like dried shoe leather. It actually looks like what it's supposed to be. So we're like with tomatoes, for example, we've got 50 producers growing tomatoes. Well, right now, we can't take in all the tomatoes they can grow. This will make that a lot easier. We can bring in the tomatoes, freeze dry them, they're then shelf-stable for 25 to 30 years, so we got plenty of time to turn them into something else. Spaghetti sauces, tomato soups, that are going to taste a lot better, more likely to get schoolchildren to eat something that tastes better, and is actually better for them, again, keeping the food dollars here, keeping the nutritional value here, too. Definitely want to partner with the local schools, culinary programs, ag programs, marketing programs. They, I met with Blue Stone last week, and the marketing guy, he said, "Hey," he said, "can my kids come up with a contest to develop a mascot for you to use with the elementary students?" I was like, "That's a great idea." It's already, it's just, there's so many ways that we can work to gather and benefit the children. Having a refrigerated farm delivery truck, that's one of our goals, and that's going to help with the Farm-to-School Program. One of the biggest problems with the schools, why they can't buy locally, is because they lack the kitchen staff now to do the prep. Well, if the Food Hub can work as that middle man to be able to do the prep, and then we have the delivery truck, we can get the food either from the schools, if it's being raised there, like lettuces or hot house tomatoes, and then prepped, and then back to the schools. And that's it. And that was a very quick presentation. There's a, there's a lot more to this project that's the short and sweet of it.
And I'd like to add that this is really an excellent example of exactly what we're looking for in partnerships with the community for our students. We've been talking for the last two and a half years about the career piece and the academic development and skills piece with the profile of a graduate that our students are working within, and that being the focus of the new schools that we are designing. This piece encompasses elementary, middle, and high for the exploration, for the engagement within the whole agriculture piece, of course, the environmental science. Career Center is one of the six career centers that we're looking at. So this is a wonderful partnership that we are so thankful that the Food Hub is going to be right here in our own county. We won't have to travel a distance for it, and will make a huge difference. Thus far, this gives us the second of our career centers with the robotics, with the advanced technology being the other one, that we've got an elementary all the way to high school with digital badge planning for the students who participate and get excited about these programs. So it works hand in hand, and we're very, very thankful for it. And I don't know if members of the board have any other questions for as they, as we move forward.
I've got, I've got a question.
Ms. Wright, first of all, thank you for your vision and what you did here. I think it's going to be a great asset to Mecklenburg County. But I would like to know, what was the total amount of this project?
To date, we are at 929,000 in grant funding in place, and I have three more to write this year.
Okay.
This, Mr. Seifers had me add this to the end of it. He already has purchased, I believe, two of these. These are hydroponics, and this is something that he and I had talked about with some of the grant funding, with some of these upcoming grants that I'm writing that would be perfect to partner with, with the school, and I'd be happy to do that, because it's going to benefit my kids one day, too. These grow tanks, you can grow tomatoes, you can see, and this is all inside, and then the grow walls. There's actually a school somewhere in the Midwest, I've seen pictures of, and the whole hallway is lettuce, and the kids can actually harvest their own salad, getting kids to eat, elementary school age, to eat salads, because how cool is it to pick lettuce off a wall and get to eat it? I mean, if I was six, I would buy that. It's great. But he had me add those, and I think he had more he wanted to add to it, but he's not here this evening. But this was one of the things with the upcoming grant funding that we're going to try to work on together, hopefully. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We are going to... We are going to bring to your attention that in your packets, you've got information about overnight field trips that we will be asking that you vote on in the upcoming month. It's in your package so that you'll have a chance to look at them over in case you have questions before we do that. They're planning ahead, and there are lots of opportunities for our students. And as you have questions through the month, please feel sure to let us know so we can be prepared, and we'll answer them. I would ask if Mr. Jeffers would come up and talk with us about the comprehensive plan that we're putting together, and then also our conversation tonight, introduce us to the conversation about the Jules and e-cigarette update.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, school board, Chair Ritchie, Vice Chair Bailey, and members of the board. Great to see you tonight, and a pleasure to stand before you tonight. I've got, Mr. Nichols is going to take advantage of you tonight and have me up here a few times. So we'll cover all the things we can. First item is, as you mentioned, the comprehensive plan. Your policy AF, school board policy directs the administration to create a plan for your adoption, and to use that plan to guide the activities of the division. For a number of reasons, we're currently not, we don't have a plan in hand. The good thing about that is, we get to develop a plan. You did a lot of heavy lifting last year, when you went through an exercise to adopt a vision. What is it, what is it we're about? What do we, what do we want to see Mecklenburg County schools become? You went through a process, developed a vision, and then behind that, you developed a mission. And then you also started thinking about the whole, the idea of the compass, the idea that we have that are committed to our mission, preparing all students for success. So a lot of heavy lifting was done last year by you guys in putting your thoughts together collectively to say, this is what we're about. The next step that happens is, objectives come from us to you to say, school board, does this reflect the objectives that you see the division doing? Do these make sense to you? Do they in fact support the mission? And so the work began actually just this past Friday, was our first meeting. It was because of the weather, we did have to scramble around a little bit. I appreciate our chair and vice chair for their work and insight already into this, and being part of this work. The comprehensive plan, I'm just going to quickly go through the, what we're looking at is the process, and certainly what they can, questions that you might have. We're going to spend some time to develop this plan, and the plan's going to begin with the objectives. If all goes well, we hope to be able to provide you with objectives in October to, for your review. And if we're ready, you'll have them then, and we'll ask you to say, do these reflect what you want? You might take a little more time. We have some room to work. The goal would be that we adopt this plan by April, May timeframe, so that we will finish this year with, this is the Mecklenburg County Public Schools Comprehensive Plan, and it's what's guiding our work throughout. That's what we want to accomplish here. The comprehensive plan, if you, if you say, well, we're some examples of these. If you go look, you'll find them called strategic plans, you'll find them called different topics. But basically, a lot of school systems in Virginia have the same idea that your policy has, which says, we need to know, and our public needs to know, what we're about, what we're doing, and how we're doing. And that's what the plan's supposed to do. So this should be something, and it could be, you know, it's in the draft forms right now, some number of pages, but it's something you should be able to pick up and say, what's going on in Mecklenburg County? And you would have all these exciting things to start sharing now about, we're building a new school around the profile of the graduate. We have all these different measures. Look at the successes that we have in Mecklenburg County. And then also realistic, what are the challenges we're facing? And what do we need, how do we need your help? The development plan, so I have, we have a couple of groups that are kind of looking at. The development plan, first of all, Development Committee are, again, as I mentioned, the chair and vice chair of the board, Superintendent Nichols, myself, the directors, the coordinators, managers, and our eight principals will be the folks that are working on the development of the plan. Once we have, in a fairly good developmental stage, we're going to reach out to the public, into a group that's, we're almost going to, a little more than double in size. All the teachers of the year, all, there'll be, every school has at least one adult, PTA member, booster member, someone that each school principal says, this is a representative, a parent from our community. Our two high schools will provide two seniors that will be part of the group. So we're going to have a fairly large group that during the November, December timeframe, maybe into January, will have a chance to look at these objectives, look at the plan, edit, revise, and say, yes, this is what, this reflects what we are about, and we think would be proper for the board to move on. And then if that goes well, in January, February timeframe, we would come to the board and say, here is our draft comprehensive plan for your review. What do you think? Your policy then requires that there be some public hearings, at least one public hearing to, so while February, March is generally the budget time, and we're going to be very involved in the budget during that timeline also, that also might be a great time to hear from the community, what do you think about the comprehensive plan? Any revisions that would need to be made would be made during that April, March, April timeframe, and then we'd hope to adopt probably in May. That's the goal. And we'd have an adoption of the board for, this is our comprehensive plan. And that, of course, having a comprehensive plan to support the vision and mission of the division is, from that point forward, you say, well, why do you want to do this? How does it fit in the plan? And that's what you want to have, is a solid standing, a solid foundation to stand on as a division, to say, this is what's driving our actions. So that's what I'd share with you about the plan tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, we will move right on to the next section.
Well, a very timely topic. Anyone who's been reading the news and following the news since, oh, September the 12th, I guess it got in the news big time then. On September 12th, the Food and Drug Administration made a very big announcement, and actually kind of a, an announcement that was a little bit unheard of from the FDA. February 12th, or on September 12th, the FDA said, hey, all you e-cigarette manufacturers out there, you have 60 days to prove to us that you can keep your product out of the hands of teenagers. That had never happened before. And they said, at the end of 60 days, if you don't do that, something's going to change. So what are e-cigarettes? What are these things about? Why are we tonight looking at this? And we're actually going to share just a little bit about the issue of e-cigarettes and things that we hear the most about called Jules. Seventy-two percent of the market is controlled by a company called Jules, $16 million, $16 billion they're worth today. And our students are addicted to these e-cigarettes. This is, is being called by any stretch of, even today's paper, or today, in today's news, 9/24, copycats are flooding the market. Ever since the announcement on September the 12th, copycat Jules are now becoming even more cheaper and cheaper for students to get a hold of, easier for students to hold of, and more dangerous for students, because these new companies are actually increasing the nicotine. So what's an e-cigarette? What's a Juul? What's a vaping device? You may not know or be familiar with what they are. And I suspect a lot of our parents aren't aware of what these devices are, and what the intent was of these devices. So one of the reasons we're bringing this tonight is because we know that our friends in the press are here tonight. This is something that we need to talk about, thinking of a clarion call to all of our parents. Parents, your sons and daughters, if they are aged 11 to 25, have been exposed to Jules or these devices. Your sons and daughters, your children, your nieces, nephews, your neighbors, these things are being used. We've had multiple instances already this year, school year, of these devices being used. They are the fastest-growing thing with teenagers. From 2011 to 2016, there's been a 900% increase in the number of students using these. They estimate that last year alone, 2 million high school students used an e-cigarette, Juul. One of, is the biggest one. Well, what do these devices do? Why are they so bad? Are they bad? All they do is deliver a little drug. Nicotine. Turns out nicotine is the highly addictive, it's a stimulant. It's the addictive drug that keeps people hooked on tobacco products. So you've heard people try to quit smoking, maybe, quit dipping, quit chewing. It's hard to quit because your body wants tobacco, or wants the nicotine. The fact itself, not an issue. So to help people get off of tobacco, they've developed e-cigarettes. Said, we're going to wean people off the nicotine so they can reduce the dose, and that was the intent of e-cigarettes. But what happened was, companies said, wow, we can deliver nicotine, and apparently say, we can get kids addicted to nicotine. These devices cost anywhere from $50 to $150 apiece. The juice that goes in these devices can be spiked with anything. 9%, they estimated, last year's middle school and high school students used an e-cigarette that had THC in it. But you can spike them with anything you want to. Whatever you can get in liquid form can be added. And these devices, they don't leave smoke, they don't even leave the little puffs of cloud like you may have seen with these cigarettes before. These devices are virtually invisible. The odor, virtually no odor, except for in the little dropper-sized bottle. So this is a problem. We want to be proactive with it. We had a meeting about three weeks ago. We had Commonwealth attorney, we had all of our secondary principals, we had state law enforcement, the sheriff, and other local law enforcement personnel here. And we had them all together to talk about, what do we do in our schools to keep our, we need to make our parents aware, we need to keep this stuff out of our school. What do we need to do? And so we have a few recommendations, and later in the action items, we're going to have a chance to, there's a small policy change that we're recommending tonight, that you'll see that. We are going to work closely with law enforcement, we're going to find some folks also in the health industry, and we're going to launch a PR campaign. In another very unprecedented move, the FDA has sent posters to 10,000 schools across the country showing the effects of e-cigarettes. The problem is, you can buy e-cigarettes in any fast, probably any little stop-and-go store in Mecklenburg County, and from here to Richmond or anywhere in the country. And kids are getting highly addicted. The most aggressive thing that's happening is, instead of having the nicotine of maybe one pack of cigarettes, you can now buy these with the nicotine of three packs of entire case of cigarettes. So the kids can't stop themselves, they have to get this. It's very, it's very dangerous for our students. One-third of the students that used these e-cigarettes last year, of the marijuana, used, one of, one-third of the students that used the e-cigarettes also had the marijuana in them. So it's a, it's a great, great gateway drug. The teenage brain is already susceptible to addiction. It's very malleable, and nicotine is just an amazing hook for these students. And it's already being shown as a gateway drug. The FDA is kind of behind on it, and we're not sure how it's going to play out when those 60 days play, run through, and if companies have not been able to show that they can in fact keep these out of the hands of minors, because they are controlled as a tobacco product. You have to be of age to purchase them. But you're going to see some things we're going to put out. We're going to conduct parent information nights. We're planning at least two of them now. We're going to put, in your packet, you have a couple of very brief articles about what is Juuling, what's vaping. There's a nice series of short videos, from one to three minutes each, that is, I think the link is in there, and we'll be using that kind of tool. We're going to have some professionals come in, and they're going to deliver this message to our parents. We'll conduct these nights and try to make our parents aware of what's going on. Because the parents, if they do see these, or catch these, they're going to say, what is that? And what do these things look like? They look like flash drives. They look completely innocent. You'd never think. And to use them, you, people just like, look like they're coughing. And there's no smoke, you just put them right back away. So parents need to be aware of what, of what these devices, our teachers do. So we're going to train our teachers and administrators, school security officers are being aware. And because we are so concerned that things like opioids can easily be put into these devices, we've also said, well, we asked the question, in that same conversation with law enforcement and our school principals, do we have Narcan in our schools? Or our nurses have that? Because it's very possible that a bad dose of this could come through, and we could have students having reactions and to these other drugs that they may not even be aware were, was in the juice that they got for their e-cigarette. We're going to continue searches. We use, as you know, a number of searches in schools. We're bound by what's called reasonable suspicion. And so we, if someone says, we think someone has an e-cigarette, or a Juul, or any of the other brand names, we can certainly search those students and try to turn those out. We are working with law enforcement also to see if maybe the dogs can help detect those, that they might pick up the scent of those. The juice in its, in its bottle has quite a bit of smell, but we are still working on, are their dogs actually being trained to deal with this epidemic that we have on our hands? In our, in our searches, just, I'm going to slide over to another pretty important thing right now. We have, back in 2016, 17, adoption was, the school board adopted something called the Student Pledge Program. That pledge program talked about random drug testing of student athletes and co-curricular programs. But the school board policy doesn't allow that. And so we're just mentioning that to you tonight to say, we're going to bring this back to you in October to, because we're going to need you to think about, do we want to, and we suspended those random searches, and to our knowledge, they wouldn't pick up nicotine, but they do pick up quite a few different items. But we suspended those searches effective August 28th, random searches of our student athletes, because we're in contradiction of our policy on that. So we're going to bring that back to you in a little more direction in October, and ask, and ask for some direction in October when we look at that. The language changes are very minor, and when we talked to our attorney, the language change that we looked at, basically, the policy, your policy now says, e-cigarettes, you can't have them in possession. And we went ahead and stipulated, you can't have them use and use, and usage or distribute those. And we also included a fairly lengthy definition of what vaping is. And that's something, obviously, five years from now, that will be gone. But it's worth putting in there now to call attention to this, this problem, as we try to educate all of our members and our community members. So I'll stop there. Anything I missed there, Mr. Nichols?
Couple of things to just clarify. We would, we know that we're having an issue with policy that our board attorney has asked that we clarify tonight, if possible. So that's what we will actually be asking you to vote on, is the language that has been brought to the table to include Jules and to talk about that particular part of it. Not, the prohibition would not only be for students, it would be for anybody on school property. That includes football games, basketball games, and the use of it at those places as well. And that's what needs to be in place to comply with expectations. What we are further advising you of is that because our local sheriff's department and Commonwealth attorney and nurses have recognized such a dramatic increase in overdoses of opioids, and because opioids can be used in these devices as a delivery device, we are going to be having our nurses add Narcan devices at each of the schools to be able to take care of that, should that happen. Currently, all of the local police have Narcan and are using Narcan, have been trained to use it. And they have suggested that as our teachers or anybody else handle these devices when they find them, they should only handle them with gloves because there is a concern about that piece. And we want to make sure that our, our staff is prepared, should something like that actually happen. The component that we are asking you to consider for another month, next month, is that, as Mr. Jeffers has mentioned, we have been doing the random searches through the drug testing, random drug testing of our athletes and band members. We need to either correct the policy as we currently have it, or we need to reconsider that. We have a concern that none of the random drug testing has turned up any identification of use of drugs at all. And we're spending between $3,000 and $5,000 a year on that option, and we just wonder if, if that's going to be worth it, if we're not getting actual results from it that are helping us in any way. I have checked, there is one other school division in the region that is considering use of random drug testing, but outside of Mecklenburg, none of the others are currently doing any drug testing of that type randomly. So I just think it's, it would be the time for us now, as we're looking at this overall policy and education of our parents, to reconsider what we're doing with that piece of it, and have you come back and, and let us know your will on that in the October meeting. But tonight, we would like to ask you to update so that we can follow through with the Jules as our school board attorney has asked us to do, and to begin the use of the educational outreach to the community, and then letting them know as well that we will be continuing with drug searches.
Mr. Nichols, what is the policy conflict?
The policy conflict is that we adopted in the student pledge removal, that in keeping with the mission of Mecklenburg County Schools, student pledge, that basically involves random drug screening to be administered, and there's a 12-page document with how it's to be administered. The school board policy, though, does not- The, the school board policy, though, does not address any, any contingency for random drug testing of our students. It allows random searches with, that have been systemically, it talked about a pre-programmed plan for a student search, but it does not talk about randomized drug testing or, or random drug testing of our students.
So, we would need to add that to the policy, which we can.
You're referring to the VSBA policy that we accepted?
Yes, sir.
Not the vote that the school board voted on to do the drug testing?
That's correct.
So, the two of those would seem to be in conflict?
So, it's like, one is a policy, and then we have the procedure. So, you voted on a procedure, but we didn't go through the process of actually putting it into our policy manual.
And many schools may not have drug testing. The reason that came about, and it was a meeting, I wasn't here, the question came about in front of this board, previous board, should we do drug testing? And thus, back in the day when we had student liaisons, and there was a, a young man that was sitting to the right, and they asked that young man about the drug testing issue, should we do it? And that young man said, well, if we had a drug testing program, probably half a certain team wouldn't be eligible. So, at that point, that's why the board, a few years ago, initiated a drug testing program. And I see your view of saying that because we haven't had any positive results, and maybe we should no longer continue, would another option be, look at other?
Yes.
Another test? Because you didn't give that option, you simply said the option of course.
Well, I apologize, I was not suggesting necessarily that we not have it, that's something that we need to consider. But I think that what we're currently using, we don't have evidence that has been effective as far as being able to find out who has or was not using it, and we may need to look at some other, if we want to continue with that, put it in our policy to can, to do that, then we may want to look at another way of doing it.
Yeah, because you didn't say that, it wasn't clear, so I figured?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
We'll have a little discussion about it.
But you know, the effect of that could be that, since there are drug testing, they don't, they knew that we did.
Yeah, I was going to say, what are you?
So, it's a deterrent. So, I think, yeah, so in that way, it may be working very well.
Yeah, and again, that's why we bring it up, just to reconsider, as this board looking at that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not saying, do this, don't do that. We're just saying, right now, it appears as though there's a conflict between the two policies that were adopted, and that board needs to have a conversation about, what do we want to do?
It almost appears that you were implying that we need to, because of lack of positive results, and then you added the cost factor in, and then you added, other schools in our region don't do it, almost implying that's the way we need to go. And I don't recall being told as a board when it was ended.
Well, we.
Well, Mr. Jeffers just said the testing had ended August 28th.
Yeah, we sent an email to our principals that day and said, let's put this on hold until we get some clarification.
But it's a board policy, not a administrator decision. So, at least the board should have been informed, or that should have been brought to the board as a board decision, versus stopping the program without letting us know and being told tonight that it had stopped.
And I have, I have a question, please. Mr. Jeffers, you also made mention of the Narcan?
Yes.
In the schools, the nurses being able to provide that, have, you know, friends with some of our rescue squad personnel, and they're saying that sometimes, that it takes four or six of these things to pop them with, to, to bring them back around. So, I mean, have we talked about how many we're going to supply, or, you know, what the need is? You know, how will we base that with, you know, 800 students in a building, 600 in another building? You know, how do you, how do we base that?
The initial work is being done through the school nurses, and so, we're, have our nurses go through the training, and we're, we agreed to purchase the Narcan. And so, we're hoping that they will, when they come back from their training and they're up to speed, they'll say, this is the amount of Narcan we advise to keep on campus. We still would anticipate, as soon as anything like that happened, 911 would be called, and we would have emergency return, responding at the time. So, it's, it's, that would be a, the goal of this would be to have someone on site that has it right now, and as the emergency folks respond, they would also have additional. But we, we don't have an answer yet as to how many each school would, would maintain.
I have a question. I have a question. The drug testing, would that pick up on the drugs from the vaping and Juuls?
It would not. That's nicotine primarily, and, but if they spiked it with THC, in theory, it should. And if they teach it with meth, it should pick it up. The drug testing picks up amphetamine, methamphetamine, cocaine, opiates, THC, ecstasy, and PCP.
Okay. One other question. If a student is caught vaping?
Yes.
Are they suspended?
It's a three-day out-of-school suspension. Currently, it's treated as a tobacco violation, and I think the reason we modify the, the language specifically for e-cigarettes is because someone could come back and say, I wasn't smoking, I wasn't using tobacco, this doesn't make sense. And, and it would just create, so this is, we're just trying to help clarify that language, say, e-cigarettes, including these vaping devices with a few listed, makes sense.
All right, one more question. If an athlete is caught vaping, would they be off a team? Would they be up to the coach?
Generally, that's school, that's coach, the team rules would usually apply there. School rules automatically would kick in, school rules might be suspension from school. But if the coaches, if the team rules were, were, they can always go above that. So, the coach or the team rules could be, if you were caught doing this, you will be removed from the team, violation of team rules.
I believe some of our athletes signed something when they're on a team about that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's the same for every sport. I know my son said he signs something for basketball, they said something about that.
It's my understanding that you said athletics and band, but I think in our changing, if we're going to make it apply, it should be to all activities, which would include any of your?
Clubs.
Clubs that we have out here, let's not just limit it to athletics?
Yes, sir.
And to the band.
Generally, searches like that extend to all co- and extracurricular groups.
That's the way I would think it should be worded.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'd like to point out, and I would ask you to pardon me if I lent you in thinking that I was saying we should be against it, I was trying just to provide as much information as possible. When we determined that there was a, a bit of a conflict between not having policy but having procedure, and needing procedures to follow policy, I was trying to point out the various components of this that should be considered as we talk about it. So, we wanted to have the, both pieces in order to come back and have actions taken. We, we were not saying, we weren't going to do it anymore, we were simply saying, until we get this piece worked out with the board, and have our board to really consider all the components.
Yes.
You know, if, if we're going to have one, it could be that what we're currently doing is enough to keep people, but that's not the indication that we're getting from some of our coaches. Our coaches seem to be of the opinion that students who they are fairly sure are in use of various, some type of drug, or alcohol device, are being tested and it's not showing up. And I'm simply saying, that may be something to talk with our coaches or athletic directors about, and as a board reconsider the whole thing, to make it be what you want it to be.
I've always wondered why all the kids that are playing sports are the ones that are, are targeted. I mean, I know, I know why, but then you have 60 to 70% of the kids that don't, don't do sports, don't do any extracurricular activities, so they're safe. I mean, nobody's ever, never, nobody will ever check them. So, I mean, I don't understand how we're, we're putting the microscope on sports and extracurricular activities, but yet we've got kids walking the halls that don't do anything, that are probably more guilty than the kids that are playing sports. I mean, why can't this be a, if you have a suspicion of a kid, I don't know why we can't drug test him. And I, if we, if, can't that be a policy? I mean, if we start to get lax now, we're building a school that's going to be monstrous. We need to start the control now. We've got three years to get this thing done.
Now, any, a school board, school board policy is currently in the books, and certainly school law is supported throughout the years, a reasonable, reasonable searches, a reasonable suspicion is enough to search a student or to have them tested.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I think there's come up before, two points.
It has.
It was a policy issue, the board needs to be addressed about the policy issue upfront, so that the board can correct that policy issue. I think the issue has come up, can all students be tested regardless of whether or not they're engaged in extracurricular activities? I don't think that, the reason car drivers and everyone engaged in extracurricular activities could be tested, because they're more at risk. For example, student drivers coming in, is a privilege to drive to school, not a right. Student athletes who may be under the influence of enhancing drugs, that will put them more at risk if they injure, they can't feel it. So, I believe that's why those groups were targeted versus the entire student body. I don't think, in our past discussions, that the entire student body could be randomly tested. And that's another legal question that we can go back on.
Any questions about the difference between what we're asking for you to vote on tonight, even though it's short, and the next month for us to consider? This would be something that we would probably want a committee to work with us on doing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Possibly with the safety committee or the?
Possibly.
Okay.
As you, as you all determine.
All right.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item G on our program tonight is, I'd like to announce to you that we are very pleased that in, in partnership with the Southside Youth Development Corporation, particularly Dr. Betty Lyles, we received a $50,000 pilot for an extended learning grant. This extended learning grant was specifically written with the idea of summertime outreach related to our career centers, and students having mentors that would work with them through the summer on developing those opportunities to understand careers and jobs, and getting engaged in the, in the business world. They, they are looking out and working, the Southside Youth Development Corporation has been an impactful program in southern Virginia for about 30 years, as I understand it. We have partnered with them before in making some space available for the work that they do, and we're going to be building the application through this year as a pilot, trying it out next summer, and then there's the opportunity for them to go after as much as $300,000 a year to continue that into, years into the future. So, we are very pleased with that program. And now, I would like to have Ms. Alga come up and talk with you about another policy update. We never get done with policy updates.
Policy update, yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Mr. Nichols. This evening, you have in your board packet, policy updates from the VSBA. It's relative to sections A, B, C, E, G, I, K, and L. I provided all of those updates for you. They are very minor as far as policy content is concerned, but they are heavy in changing legal references as well as cross-references. I will call your attention to the deletion of Policy EBA, which overlaps with Policy EB. This has to do with School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Plan, and Policy EC, Buildings and Grounds Management and Maintenance. So, there will be a deletion of Policy EBA. And I'll also call your attention to Policy CMA, that's going to be a name change or a title change. It's now going to be Quality Profiles, and that details the changes from the School Division Annual Report Card to Quality Profiles in keeping with the redesign of the performance standards for School Divisions. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, then, the, the policy that is yet to be defined regarding drug testing is not in what you are?
It's not in this packet, no ma'am.
And is, I, I guess I just need a little clarification as to how we're going to proceed regarding this, this policy that we need to develop for, for the drug testing. Are we, is there going to be another committee meeting? Is that going to be presented to us before our next meeting? Because I, I think that's something that needs to be cleared up. You know, we're already in more, we've already completed at least a third of our fall sports. Some of our fall sports are concluding this week with golf championships. So, I feel like, as board, we need to move forward with something.
Ms. Bailey, I, it was my understanding that when the board voted on it, that was part of the policy. You had to have a policy in order to conduct a drug test. Now, where that policy is, as we're constantly doing updates, I don't know. We can probably look back at the minutes when that vote took place, and it should specify the policy. The board made it a policy, it had to have a policy in order to do it. So, we're going to have to do some research on that.
So, was that vote made before or after you adopted VSBA policy?
After.
It was after.
Yeah. So, then the VSBA policy that we had in place?
It was an amendment to the VSBA policy.
Okay. So, then that should be reflected in your minute?
Yes.
At that time.
So, it could just be added, and that's the end of it.
If you voted on it at that point?
Yes.
We did.
Probably have to look at the minutes. When was that? I mean, has that been the last three years?
Not now.
No, it was maybe a year or two before.
Yep.
And, and when, when this board came into being, and I came in as superintendent, we looked, we, you determined you wanted to continue to use VSBA policy. I'm sure that particularly related to this, Mr. Jeffers would have looked to see where, and did look to see where it was stated. It, it may have been that there was a change, but we couldn't find reference to it. So, we, that's why the action was taken. We, we will continue to look back and see where that might be. There was, I remember when we came in, there were actually two policies online that were there, and we had to clean that up. It could be that it got misplaced when there were the two policies that were online, and we were trying to clean that up. So, I apologize if that was there and we didn't find it, but we, we want to, we didn't, and so, that's why we're looking at it now.
Well, it was very similar to what we're doing to the current VSBA policy. We are mending it to include Juuls, that's not part of VSBA policy.
Right.
So, when we do these amendments, that's what we?
They just need to be in place where we can continue to look back to it.
And if you look online, standard VSBA, VSBA policy, it may not show it.
Right, right.
So, how are we going to?
When we add components, or when, like we're talking about doing tonight, then it is the responsibility, our responsibility to go in and add that piece to the section that is online that we have.
And then the following year, when the VSBA gives the updates, is that going to carry over?
It should carry over, but we have to be careful to make sure.
Not by VSBA, but by us?
Not by VSBA, but by the locals. That's what we have to be careful and make sure, that when those modifications, that we continue ours to be updated as well.
So, we could have had a modification, but the next year, VSBA policy comes out, that modification wasn't there because we only use the VSBA model?
Right.
Saying, that's what happened years ago. We just, we, we, the, the policy manual, we didn't have, we didn't have it on one. We had a policy manual that was this thick, that we, each school board member had one, and we took it home and used it as a vote anchor, I guess. But, I mean, it was heavy. But it got to the point that it was so confusing with additions and adding, subtracting, that we decided to, that's when we decided to get Brad King and his, his, his attorneys to rewrite our whole policy manual. We paid $20,000 to have that done. We rewrote the policy manual to fit Mecklenburg County Schools. And then, we kept that for like, six years, and then all of a sudden, we got a new school board, and, and they decided they liked the VSBA policy better, so we switched back to the VSBA. We, so we lost everything that we had done for $20,000. That just went away, and we adopted a policy, a blanket policy by the VSBA. So, that's what happened. All of the things that we did to fit the School Division disappeared. So, now, we're kind of starting over.
But you just said that the drug testing policy was done after that?
It was done after.
It was.
So, that should have been included on, in our online VSBA policy.
Should have, should, should have.
Now, it's possible that maybe it didn't get updated.
Right.
But just because it didn't get updated online, doesn't mean it's, it doesn't exist. It just means it's in the minutes, and it needs, and the policy just needs to be updated to reflect that.
Entirely possible, you're right.
Mr. Jeffers, did you find it in the minute? Have you found the minutes?
I did not find that in the minutes. What I found was the vote in 2016, 17, that the board took to adopt this policy, which appeared to be in conflict. But I did not consider what you're suggesting, which is very possible, that when the update, annual updates are made, probably uploaded together, and you've got to have your checklist of, oh, we have, don't forget that policy we had here, which was our custom policy. As you're talking, you lost all those changes from there, probably can't get those back. But that, it's very possible that happened, if we were able to dig back to the minutes. And of course, then we wouldn't be in conflict with policy, it's just what's written as our policy or visible to the public is different. It's just what's written as our policy or visible to the public is different than what we're acting on.
It is crucial now, and to stay in time with things being online. What's online is what the public would be able to go to and see, and they can challenge if what we're doing is not what's online for them to be able to see, so, you know.
This was, this policy, the student pledge, was online, but when we changed over our website, and we had that to change over, that piece was lost. Because this document clearly states where to find this online under our old website. So there have been a lot of transitions on one policy, like annual website.
My recommendation would be, as we have had so many call meetings already, that we have another call meeting, and we sit down and try and discuss this, to have all these people here sit down and hear us badger back and forth about whether it's in there or not in there, it's not going to accomplish a whole lot. But if we get a small group and let us sit down, or the entire group, the entire board, and sit down and try to come up with a workable solution, then I think that's the way we should go. We're not going to accomplish anything like this. I give you my opinion, and the next person give you theirs, and round the table.
Mr. Palmer, I agree with you, to the point that because it was a policy issue, it should have been brought to the board, not brought up in this public meeting, addressing a policy issue that the board never discussed.
That I concur.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
So for me, what will we be voting on when we vote on this tonight? I just want the clarification of what we're actually voting on.
So tonight, the only thing we're asking you to vote on is that we change the language for the e-cigarettes, and which was, you know, that picture, that we're going to include possession and distribution of those e-cigarettes in our policy, and also the definition of vaping and jewels, which is that fairly large paragraph that we incorporated into the two places in current policy that are on the website that address tobacco use and e-cigarettes. We're making that, that's all we're asking to vote on tonight. The other is a big question, absolutely is a big question.
And the term jewels, when I conferred with our school board attorney, he specifically suggested that we include that term because jewels is a new term that many people were not familiar with, and he didn't want anybody to come back and say it was not specifically mentioned. So that would have been a part that we would have brought back anyway, at his recommendation.
Okay. So then you'll continue to look for past minutes and then report back on that? So we'll hear an update on that at a later meeting?
Yes.
We're having a brief discussion about, Mr. Jeffers has a copy of the policy with the updates, and I can quickly go scan that and upload it to this policy. But however, I'm not asking for any changes on my policy updates for tonight. Mine are simply for information only and action next month. But Mr. Jeffers, I think, is seeking some sort of action this evening. So if you will give us a moment to, let me go upload that, you can carry on, but I'll add that to the policy, if that's acceptable at this point with an approval of the agenda.
So you're going to add, which policy you're going to, to this, to this information?
Policy referring to. You're going to have to do it for information?
Yeah, policy J., J F C H. and G B E C., the language that you have with, again, minor changes in the language for electronic cigarettes.
Oh, yes, we have, yes.
And then the...
I thought we already had that.
And then the large, so very small language change in the policy itself, electronic cigarettes, but then it also includes the paragraph about defining what vaping is, and does include jewels and whatnot.
So under seven E., under seven E., we already have V S B. A. policy J F C H. The intro and the changes are already in our packet.
Okay.
So we already have that.
So what were you talking about scanning and uploading? Something different than that?
Just so it will show different in the, you talking about for the board packets?
Yes.
Yeah, for the board packets. She may have missed that.
J F C H. is already in our board packet.
I think Ms. Bailey's saying it's already there.
It didn't, it's not my upload on policy, I apologize.
Okay. So we got what we need.
It's not in your section, it's in his section.
No, ma'am, it's not in my section.
Correct. So what was in your section is for action next month, but it doesn't include any policy on random drug testing.
No, ma'am.
That was my question.
Right. Mine is strictly V S B. A. updates that have come.
Thank you.
And very minor content changes.
That's what I noticed, but it was a lot to read, so...
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Let's move on, I'm going to start vaping.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
How many of us have read it?
Okay, item I. for us, for your consider tonight.
What about H.?
H., excuse me, I'm looking at the other one. Item H. is the budget calendar that we have adopted each year. Is that what you have on the website?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm just bringing to your attention that we go through the idea of a budget calendar each year. We start working on budgets in, on July 1. and conclude when it's completed. This is the time of year when we ask the school board to consider with this information for the budget calendar, the way that we're going to be putting this together for the year, and bringing to our attention items that you feel from your committee meetings or from just your own interest in specific areas, to let us know so that we can begin adding that, or start with that foundation to what we'll be doing in the upcoming year. We always begin with the school board. So full transparency, we're asking you to look at this tonight, and this is what we would like to begin completing as we go to the calendar. And Mr. Jeffers, if you have more that you wanted to add to that?
Yes, sir. Of course, one of the most important things that we do, the division, is how do we use the public money? $43 million in that neighborhood is a considerable amount of change, and we want to use that as wisely as possible. And so the process, even though we just started fiscal year, we're in the process. And so now that you, if you adopt this calendar, what we're hoping is that we can send the email to the principals. Can you kind of see how it's sketched out in here? That you begin thinking about what's important to you to bring forward in October. We also would be communicating the principals, what are your needs, specific needs, that you'd be thinking about those, to get back to us by the November 2. date. And then we begin reviewing, we review the principal requests, and then, of course, we start building the super tense estimation of needs from there, and the finance work begins there in December. So it's a, it's a process. It's a pretty tight calendar, and, but hopefully you'll, you can adopt this as workable and with flexibility, of course.
Well, Ms. Bailey, this is part of your committee work as well, so I don't know if you have comments on it.
Well, I would just encourage the board members to, October 15. is not very far away. So I would just encourage all of you to start thinking about your priorities for the upcoming year regarding personnel or programs, and get those out early so that administration can respond, however they see fit. And, you know, you can submit those in email directly to Mr. Nichols, or you can do it through finance committee, that's completely up to you, how you want to handle that. But I would suggest that each of you respond, whether you have ideas or not, just so that he knows that he's heard from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And now moving on specifically to other general comments, first of all, I want to just give kudos to all of staff, principals, teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everybody who worked with us, particularly last Monday, but even into the week, Tuesday and Wednesday. It was an incredible day, as I mentioned earlier, with the storms that came through. We had 12 to 15 inches of rain on some areas of the southwestern part of the county. We had two tornadoes that I'm aware of. We have still roads that are covered by water and yet need to be inspected. We started out with over 35 roads that were critically impacted, and I think, Bill, we're down to less than 20 at this point. We have six that are still impacted. We have gone through considerable work to pull all of the technology down with the technology team, the I T. R. Ts., and they got that back up. So I just think the whole staff did an incredible job. I might add that it was a little bit, it was particularly difficult in the middle of Monday, dealing with tornadoes, and I've heard from most principals, they don't remember ever having to ask the students to come out into the halls and away from the windows before, and that the students did a great job with that whole piece of it. So we're very thankful for that. We did have so much rain coming off of the roof at Blue Stone Middle School that it caused the pipe to rupture, and it lifted, as many of you saw a picture of, a 10,000-gallon tank with 3,000 gallons of fuel oil in it up out of the ground, looked like a submarine coming out of the ocean. And somehow, and I don't know how, but somehow, the report was that that was, there had been an explosion, or there was smoke, and there was fire in the building. That got to the channel, the television stations in Richmond, and in the middle of the board of supervisors' vote for the new school, I couldn't get a rest from answering telephone calls from Channel 6. and Channel 8. and Channel 12. about the fires at Blue Stone Middle School. So we did evacuate because we were told it was a danger that of a possible explosion, and we did evacuate in the middle of it. It was a difficult day, but the students all got home safely, and I just give kudos to everybody for that. It does lead to the question I've seen many people ask about makeup days. You will remember that we asked and you agreed that we would reduce the amount of time for the students in the school day by 30 minutes. It was understood by all staff, as we looked at doing that, that it would reduce the number of days that we bank from 16 to eight days. When you break that down by semester, which is at the secondary level, very important because of four-by-four block, we're down to four days, which we've used four days. Until today, we had half a day that was supposed to be professional development. We had you, asked you to work with us in making available that to the students. So we are half a day good for the rest of this semester without having to do some makeup. We may need to come back, and I want to warn people that it's very possible that the time that was built in for critical emergencies or days could have to be made up. We have two options left, well, three options. We can add time to the end of a day, which we couldn't do before because we were maxing out what was available to those staff persons who were not under contract, under the contract for extended days. Or we can use the day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which we built into the calendar, which you built into the calendar, for an extra option for that time. And we do have another half a day that's available for professional development that we can use. But we know that we have had snows as early as December, and that would be after Thanksgiving, so we're having to watch this very closely. I know there's been some comments about, well, the Thursday and Friday were emergency days that were declared by the county and the state. That's not taken into consideration instructional time, and we have to look at this part by what's in instructional time. So we are almost maxed out of that piece right now for the benefit of the students. And I just want to make that clear as expectation for what we have this semester. I'd also like to bring to your attention, we're very excited, because the Coast Guard Auxiliary here has offered to provide to our students that are interested a free boating class that they will be able to take advantage of, particularly those who are participating in the fishing teams that we have. And that will be starting soon. We will be, we have had generous support from the civic organization, the Rudin Club in Clarksville, to help purchase the books that will be going, necessary for that. We're going to make sure that there we have enough books that we will be able to keep and be able to help keep our students safe as they would participate in the boating class, which is required to use a boat. And then I'd also like to bring to your attention that Mecklenburg Electric, last week, announced their fiber optic cable to the household program. Of course, education is one of the key areas for that. I was very honored to be asked to be a part of that. We're going to be very excited to support that effort so that we can begin more and more to get high-speed internet into our community. Last week, for those of you that participated in the V S B. A. Legislative Conference, you saw information about how important fiber optic, or at least high-speed internet access to the classroom, or to the household is. And Mecklenburg is, at this point, very well suited in our schools for high-speed internet, but in our county, we are not. We are at the bottom of the barrel. And so this effort, plus other efforts by other entities to bring that to our homes, is critical. At that point, we'll be able to send laptops home that we currently have with our students, and we will have virtual learning days at home so that we won't miss school when we have emergency weather issues. And we look forward to that day, but until we get internet, high-speed access into the homes, we won't have that option. So we are very excited and commend Mecklenburg Electric and the other entities that are working so hard on that piece. I'd also like to bring to your attention that the National Rural Education Association Conference is coming up in October. I have been asked, along with our representatives at Microsoft for the Teals Program, to give a national presentation on the Teals Program. We are one of five schools in the nation right now that has that. It's very important. Microsoft is very excited about seeing that program expand because it has been as successful as it has for us. And I will be going with representatives from Microsoft to make that presentation, and am very pleased to be able to do so, and thankful to Microsoft for their continued support. And finally, I'd like to bring to your attention that the South Central Fair is coming up, and we have the STEM bus from the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research that is going to be outside of the gates of the South Central Fair on the first night of the program, which is the Tuesday night, and students who come through and take advantage of seeing the bus and what it brings to them, as far as some opportunities for future growth, will be able to get into the fair for free. And you might have some more comments on that, Ms. Garner.
Yes, there's one other thing. If the Tuesday night is a success, and there were students that were not, or did not have the opportunity to come on Tuesday, they're going to try to do it again on Thursday night with the same deal. The students will get in free, provided they go through the lab. They go through the lab, and then they'll get their tickets to enter the gate.
And of course, once they get inside, then we have our elementary schools' displays, we have F F. A. competitions, we've got all kinds of wonderful things coming up inside the fair this year. I have the honor again of being one of the judges for some of those things, along with some of the rest of you, and we're excited about that again this year.
The egg science on Tuesday night is amazing. If you haven't been, you need to go and talk to the students because they are really proud of their projects. So the fair has, in this area lately, has become more community-friendly by providing a lot of things for the kids, and the hipness is great. We need to get Mr. Nichols up there.
So, thank you very much. That's my comments and reports for tonight.
Okay. Well, I think we'll move on to our committee reports. The Joint Education Committee has a...
Well, the only thing we, Mrs. Lundt has called for a meeting on October 3. at the superintendent's, Board of Supervisors' conference room at 5:00 P. M. That's on October 3. to discuss the new school and some of the other things. That'll happen.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met today at 5., and we'll have a recommendation for the payment of the bill.
The School Safety Committee?
Yeah, the School Safety Committee, or School Safety has become a priority for the governor and the General Assembly. They are studying some things that we're going to be excited about with our new school, hopefully. So we plan to be having a meeting with the Safety Committee, any board member that wants to come, and some staff members, and at that point, we'll probably add more people to the Safety Committee, the local law enforcement, fire departments.
Okay, good, sounds great. Gifted, talented, special ed., health and family?
Nothing.
Give these to Ms. Garner. C T., career and technical education? I don't think Mr. Seifers. Athletics Committee?
Student athletes are engaging. We had another great battle of the county football game this year. I think everyone that attended enjoyed it. Volleyball, golf, I think, cross-country, all the teams are doing well. One of the things that's really being communicated in the community is what are we going to do when we consolidate schools? There's concern from some parents that say, for example, baseball, when you consolidate two baseball teams, there's only going to be X. number of spots. So one of the things we're going to do with the Athletic Committee, or as the board as a whole, is to consider... a whole, is to consider other options as far as sports prior to consolidations. There are a lot of other sports that are on the rise, lacrosse, field hockey, boys volleyball, swimming is one of those sports. So, as we get a little closer, we need to have some conversations about whether or not we're gonna increase the amount of opportunities for athletes. Thank you.
Thank you. The Instruction Committee met this afternoon, and we are discussing teacher salaries and possible solutions to that, and also the dual enrollment situation in the future of that. So, we will have something to come back with for too long, I hope so. We'll probably need to immediately spend more time before we do. We are now to our public input time. Is there anybody signed up to speak?
Yes.
All right.
At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the Board and Administration. Public comments at Board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the Board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the Board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the Board. Let me make sure I get this right. Mr. DeZamba?
Yes, correct. Hi, good evening. My name is Mark DeZamba, and I am a resident of Wooden Bridge Road. I'm approximately one mile from the new school site. Wooden Bridge Road running to Baskerville Road is about 1.5 miles. My concern is about traffic, not necessarily school buses, but perhaps kids coming through, coming late to school, cutting through the backroads, and coming down our road. Ours is mainly an agricultural area. The road is very narrow. There's column binds and large equipment going back and forth during harvest season and other times planting season as well. I have animals, and sometimes I'm out on the road with my horse. I am concerned about kids in their cars speeding on that road. I brought that up to the Board of Supervisors, and there were a couple of supervisors that did agree that that could possibly be a problem. I don't know what could be put in place to police that, so to speak. And I don't want to be the nosy neighbor sitting out there in the morning with my pad, taking pictures of cars that are speeding. That's one of my concerns. My other concern is, what is the exact amount of money that we're paying for this particular property that is so imperative that we have a school on that road? Can anybody answer me that question? Because I went down to the Hall of Records, and this property is taxed on $339,000. You're paying almost three times that much, or more? Doesn't make sense. Or at least to the public, it doesn't make sense. Another thing that I do want to bring up, and it does seem that, you know, you all have your minds made up that that's, this is where the school is gonna go. And, you know, there was, to my understanding, a piece of property that was a lot closer to the seat of the county, and it was just given away. Now, I'm sure you had some good reasons for that, but again, the public does not see it that way. And when I say the public, I'm talking about the people on my road. The school is very exciting because it's gonna be something new and beautiful, but a brand-new school is not necessarily gonna attract industry here. And if you do attract industry here, you're gonna have to have a higher quality or better-paid teachers. Now, as Mayor Allgood said in the last meeting, you know, we're spending all this money on a brand-new high school, but can't we give teachers more money, more pay? And I think it was Mr. Ritchie that said, "Well, you know, we're making this one-time expenditure for the school, but to raise salaries, we'll be looking at a million dollars a year." But that is also an investment to be considered, and you do have a shortage of teachers right now. But you're also lucky that you have a few good teachers that just started up this year. Whether or not they're gonna stay in place, depends on what happens. Another thing that concerns me, too, is, you know, I saw something that supervisors said, you know, they wouldn't pay for any extra pumping stations. Well, what if there's a need for more pumping stations? You agreed on $120 million, but I've seen figures as large as $165 million. So, what happens then? Do we cut back some of the school amenities? Do we reduce staff? That's something that, again, as a public person, I think it's important that we know and that we're talked to honestly. Another thing is construction. And living on a road that is completely agricultural and having this big project happening down the street, how is that gonna affect my quality of life? I hope it doesn't affect it very much. There's gonna be trucks in and out of there, there's gonna be blasting. Is that going to affect the quality of water of our wells? Did anybody think of that? Or did anybody do some kind of research into that? My foundation cracks, my house falls down? Not that it will, but these are all things that can go wrong. These are all things that people are concerned about when you have such an ambitious project very close to where people live. And again, it's an agricultural area. There's animals out there, there's cows, there's horses, there's goats, and then there's fields of soybeans and tobacco. What about cost overruns? What about the cost of the project manager? Is that all figured in the $120 million, or is this something extra? And where is the extra coming from? Gonna raise taxes? What are we raising the taxes up to? Those are two questions and concerns that I have. Now, this is all respectful, and I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, and I'm not saying, you know, "We've been lied to," or "Somebody's on the take," or, but these are things that I have heard from others. I am part of a community down here. I own a piece of property in South Hill, which I'm in the process of developing. So, I have some, some things, you know, here that I'm involved in, and I intend to stay. So, I'm not just saying not in my neighborhood, you know. I don't know, you know, it seems kind of funny that the Board of Supervisors, there were two people that declined to vote, and then a third person, whose family is actually involved in the owning of the property, that he was allowed to even be on the Board during this particular time. That's my opinion, okay? Again, doesn't smell right, but I'm not the only one that's saying that. I'm the only one that has the nerve to come up here and talk to you, man and lady do man.
All right. We're about out of time. Are you, are you just about finished?
Yeah, I am. I am just about finished, and I do appreciate you listening to me.
Okay.
You know, I have talked to some other board members and got sort of a little different picture of what's going on, so, you know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's a couple of items I'd like to have a chance to...
Sure, I'm sure you'd appreciate it.
Appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
I've heard many of the concerns that you've mentioned. One item that I have heard many times that I'd like to publicly clarify. Early on in the program, in the process, the Joint Education Committee met and chose four sites that were deemed to be between Boydun and Highway 4 as the area that they were looking at for the most central, and what properties would be of sufficient size for the process.
Right.
And then there was a geological study that was done, a preliminary geological study on those four sites. About a year ago, almost a year ago exactly, we came back together in that committee. Again, I and Mr. Carter were not voting members, we were just there. And we got the geological reports on the four sites, and it was interesting, at that point, the committee was actually told by the Board of Supervisors that the two sites that were in the Boydun area were removed from consideration, that there were businesses that were, had expressed significant interest in those sites. So, it's, they were not areas that were allowed to be considered by us as we went forth, and I believe I'd have the follow-up from the other members that are on the Joint Education Committee that that happened on that evening. So, that was, that was not something that we had the option beyond that to look at those sites anymore.
Okay, all right.
That would, I have heard that come up frequently as well.
Yeah, 'cause it hasn't been clear, you know, in anything I read, and even some people I've talked to, they don't know.
Right. I understand, that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, is because I continue to hear that as well. People say, "Why don't we go back to that site, it would be free and whatnot."
So, you're saying there were two sites that you could pick from?
There were two sites in Boydun that were being considered, yes. We call those sites A and Site B. One of them was actually the old prison site. And that, as I understand it, I haven't seen anything official, but that as I understand it, there is a industry that is well-known in the area that wants that site, and that's why it was taken off from, taken from consideration for the school site.
Okay, so it was basically given away, not by this Board?
I can't tell you, I can't tell you if there was cost to it or anything else.
Yeah.
I don't know that, and I can't speak to that. But I do know that as far as being considered for the school, it was taken off of the list of potential sites for us to consider. And we've been working with the other sites for a year with the Highway Department and others to determine what could be done.
Also, Mr. Nichols, and I'm sorry to take another minute here, but is there any comprehensive maps to the public that can see where the school is actually gonna be? You know, again, my main concern, my first concern, rather, was traffic on Wooden Bridge Road. Now, at the supervisors' meeting, they said everything was gonna be dumped onto 58. But the map that was shown at the supervisors' meeting didn't make it very clear what the road was, what the traffic pattern is, you know?
There has been a highway study done, and the Highway Department made it clear from the beginning, there would be one entrance to the school from Highway 58.
Okay.
And the other one from the side. That will be reflected in what the Board of Supervisors voted on last Monday, and what this Board will vote on tonight to accept or not accept. There is a plot, a plat, that was the official plat from the clerk's office on size and where that is.
All right.
And as it's voted on tonight, that would be public.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing me. Again, I'm curious about why we're paying so much for a piece of property. If anybody could come back with an answer, either in the newspaper or personally, you know where I live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see. We are now at our action items for tonight. The first item, in regards to the minutes of the August 8, 2018 meeting, do I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on August 20, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Mr. Chairman, I was absent from that meeting, I abstained.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on August 23, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Mr. Chairman, I was absent from that meeting, I abstained.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Mrs. Giamodio, I was also absent, so I will abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
I was absent also, abstained.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on August 30?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, I already have a motion from the Finance Committee to approve the payment of the bills. May I have a roll call, please, to approve the payment of the bills?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the personnel recommendations from tonight?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Garner, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, with exception.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the Superintendent's recommendation regarding student matter, SM 2018, 2019-03, to release three students applying for religious exemptions?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
May I have a motion that the School Board approves the update to V S B A policy, J F C H?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board agrees to accept the property identified as T N P 113000A009 from the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors for the new middle and high school complex?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Discussion, sorry.
Mr. Ritchie, Chairman, this property hasn't been purchased yet, correct?
It's not, my understanding that it hasn't. We conferred, concurred with Mr. Carter. He indicated that the Board would need to accept their approval to purchase the property in order to be able to move forth, just like on the bond referendums that has taken both Boards to approve the bond referendum.
So, we have to accept the property before they purchase it?
Yes.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Sturdivan?
No, but if we have to, I guess we have to tell them officially we want the property before they buy it.
That's my understanding.
What I understand at the beginning of this process, that we would have to approve any site.
Prior to the purchase?
Yeah, well, that's what I assumed.
They have the decision to purchase it, well, okay, I understand, thank you.
Any more discussion? Alright, I had a motion, you've already got the motion, it's seconded. May I have a roll call then, please?
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board deems the transportation items as surplus?
So moved, second.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Sturtevant, roll call please.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the 2018-2019 Blue Stone Middle School FFA overnight field trip to Blacksburg, Virginia?
So moved, second.
A motion by Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Sturtevant, roll call please.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the 2018-2019 South Hill Elementary DI overnight trip to Knoxville, Tennessee?
So moved.
Second.
A question?
Yes.
The DI has been changed to Kansas City and not Tennessee, would this have to be amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is that for the global competition?
Yes. It's not in Tennessee, it's come here.
Are you going to amend it?
It, it moved to Kansas City, we were notified after that.
When were you all notified?
I got an email on it.
Ms. Garner, you want to amend it?
I mean, is that something you want to amend? Well, I can vote for you to go to Ten, I can vote for you to go to Tennessee all day long, Ms. Eisenhower, but that's not where they're supposed to go.
I make a motion to amend, to reflect the new location.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Sturtevant to amend the location on the DI field trip request, and seconded by Mr. Edwards.
It's not his request.
Any more?
I've, can he amend it if it's not his request? Mr. Sturtevant is not requesting this bill.
But the board members are voting on it, we can amend the, what's the wording of it?
We can amend what we approved, right? What would you like?
Okay. I would have just liked for them to stand up and say, "Can we change it to Kansas City", since it's their request. But that's fine, oh, y'all, we'll go, go, go ahead. I'm good.
I think the, the issue is, is getting the, the vote so that the students can go there, be it Ms. Eisenhower coming up amending it, or a board member amending it, the results, the outcome's going to be the same. Be the same.
Any more discussion? I have a roll call please.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstained.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Alright, reminders, we have the regular school board meeting on the 15th of October. The 16th of October, school dismisses at noon, half of teacher workday. And that's still in effect? That one is.
At this point.
October 24th, parent-teacher conferences, elementary schools, 4:15 to 6:30. On the 25th, parent-teacher conferences, middle schools, from 4:15 to 6:30. Now, we are to board member remarks. Mr. Honeycutt, do you have any remarks?
Yeah, I do.
Sorry.
Okay. Again, I just want to thank our staff and administrators for what they did to help all of our students with the recent storms and our administration here at Central Office, who took necessary precautions to make sure all of our students and faculty were, were safe. Also, I know that everyone in the public is entitled to their opinion, so I'm going to give you mine this evening when it comes to our new schools. I can assure the public that this, for me, has not been a very easy decision. We have been dealing with this for the three years that I have been on this school board, and it is not one that I have taken lightly. I have encouraged public, the, the public, and especially in my district that I serve, in District Five, to come out and participate in every meeting that took place regarding this new school. I believe information has been readily available to the public, either here at the Central Office or in Boynton. It has been concrete, it's been transparent, and this is what we have needed to do to move forward with new school facilities, to replace our very poor, dilapidated, falling-down schools in Mecklenburg County. I commend all of these board members for what we have done here tonight in voting to move forward with this piece of property. I believe it's a milestone for Mecklenburg County, because as we all know, especially some of the board members who've been on here a lot longer than I have, we do things for the long haul in Mecklenburg County. And I'm proud to say tonight that I'm a part of a movement to build better facilities in Mecklenburg County. I read a lot of the comments on Paul's Facebook page, when he put it up there, a lot of negative, ugly comments that I had to stop reading. Again, this is a decision that was not easy, we were playing the cards that we were dealt. Like Mr. Nichols said, there's two pieces of property, one of which was the old prison site, was taken off the table by the Board of Supervisors, not the School Board, as well as A and B, both of those sites. So, I feel like that of the sites that we were given, or the Joint Education Committee were given to move forward with for this new school, I commend them for the work they've done, and Mr. Edwards was a part of that committee. Ms., Mr. Bailey, excuse me, and also Mr. Palmer, and I commend their efforts for what they've done. I don't believe anything shady was ever anything about this, irregardless of we've gone to A, B, C, D, E, F, G, whatever lands you wanted to, or whatever properties involved in that. I don't believe anything shady took place, I mean, that's just my belief. I believe that the Board of Supervisors recognized with this board that we wanted a better facility to educate our children in Mecklenburg County, and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah. I, I really wish the vote to buy the land had been unanimous. I think that's the one thing that this board has gotten behind, and as y'all seen tonight, policy is policy, and if we don't have a policy in place and we have to come up with issues, I may tend to ask a few extra questions to cover myself. I think as a board member that that is not above and beyond what I need to do. And if I vote for something and it's not proper, I'm not going to be held responsible. I honestly think that, well, I'm just going to leave it at that, and that's it.
Mr. Palmer?
I am very pleased with where we are with the new school. Surely, we're not going to ever be able to get all on the same board to agree on everything, but folks, let me tell you, I have been in this county quite a few years. We have dragged our feet a long time with dealing with a new school, and if you think about it, the elementary schools are not that far behind having to have them replaced. If anything, I think we have waited too long. There is never in a society where everyone is going to agree, that's just society, that's just people. But I think that we have come far enough now, wherein that we're at the point of having something be done, and I'm very happy to be a part of it.
Mr. Edwards?
Now, I can explain my vote. I'm from the far western end of the county. My constituents in the far western end of the county are very disturbed about the location of the school. I represent that end of the county. I actually represent all the children of Mecklenburg County, I don't have a preference, but the people in the western end of the county have come to me and they've talked to me, and I've asked them all the questions. Here's what bothers me, it's not all about the location, the other six miles we can live with, and we will, because it's been decided the democratic way, and that's the way the world is run, and I support that school 100%. I support the vision that our new superintendent has brought to us, and that's how we're going to design the school, and that's what we're going to live by, and it's going to be a great thing. What I don't, what I don't agree with is I've been on this study commission for 23 years, I've watched us do studies two and three times, every three or four years, and put them on a shelf. This is the first time we've moved forward with anything, so it's going to end up being a great thing. Even though the location is not going to suit everybody, and it doesn't suit me, and it doesn't suit my constituents, it's a done deal, and we'll all stand behind it, and I'm going to help every way I can to make this thing a success. What does bother me is that when we started talking about this three years ago, we said that we were going to do, this was going to be a, called a complete package, and in that complete package was it was going to be a new high school, middle school complex, it was going to be all of our edu, all of our, uh, elementary schools were going to be rebuilt in time, that was going to be part of the package, which it is coming, the supervisors are already committed, and another package was going to be in this big package, we were going to include teacher raises. Well, this is what bothers me, moving six miles up the road and putting in a sewer line that costs five to seven million dollars, to me, all you people that strive and slave every day, your salaries and your raises and a sewer line being pumped back to Boynton, and that's how I feel about it. And that's the reason I voted no. I will stand behind this new school, and I will do everything I can to make it a success, because that's the democratic way, and I want our kids to, to benefit, but I just feel like we've been cheated about that much, and the people in my district feel that way, and I just had to state it tonight, and they'll, it's, but I will stand behind the decision that was made here tonight, because that's what is, that's the right way. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jeffers, Mr. Palmer, and myself attended the Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charlottesville last week. Focus of this meeting is to talk about what legislation might be considered by the General Assembly in January, and also hot topics regarding law and law enforcement regarding our schools. We received an excellent presentation by Donna McCallis, who is the Director for the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety, which is part of the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Virginia really has been on the cutting edge of school safety. We were the first state to require mandatory threat assessments by all of our buildings, and I, I think Virginia's kind of gotten a bad rep in the past because of, you know, school-to-prison pipeline and all that, but we found out during that meeting and through her presentation, that that was all skewed and misunderstood. And in fact, we had one of the lowest school-to-pipeline percentages in the nation. She gave an excellent presentation, and I think that parents in the state of Virginia can feel assured that their children are attending schools that consider threats and consider how we can keep our students safe during those threats. We also listened to a presentation on educational equity, especially regarding rural schools. Two of the things that stood out are broadband access for rural schools, which Mr. Nichols told the truth, and that Mecklenburg County is in a section of Virginia that is the lowest as far as internet access in the home, and we thank our local telephone cooperative and our electric cooperative for doing the, the work that needs to be done to get those services into the homes. And also, equity in rural schools regarding teacher pay. And we listened to an excellent presentation from three superintendents from rural school divisions, and in the state of Virginia, we're going to have to get very serious about what we pay our teachers in the state. And the recommendation was made by one of those rural superintendents that our starting salary for teachers needs to be at least $50,000, maybe in the $50,000 to $55,000 range, because of the level of education that they receive and have to pay for to be qualified to teach in our schools. And, you know, you know, it's, it's real, it's something that we need to start thinking about and lobbying our legislators for, not only on the state level, but certainly on the local level. And also legislative action that might be on the docket in January would certainly be regarding school safety. The School Safety Committee was formed in the General Assembly level, and they came up with, I think it was 55 recommendations, and I'm sure that there's going to be some legislation that's going to be addressing that. Also, 40%, or was it 60%, Mr. Palmer, of the schools' buildings in the state of Virginia are more than 40 years old. And school modernization, and the funding for that school modernization is certainly going to be something that might be on the legislative docket for January, and we've talked about here in our board meetings about the ability for county localities to play with the sales tax percentage, and certainly that money being earmarked for school modernization. So, the other issue regarding tax conformity, typically when there are changes on the federal level with federal taxes, many times states will conform their state tax to match with the federal tax has become, so there may be some legislation regarding that. And also, we're still dealing with, the General Assembly still wants to tell us on the local level when we can start school. So, we're really hoping that, once again, that will come forward and that they will give us local autonomy in determining when we can start school without having to get a waiver from them. I would like to thank Ms. Swain, Dr. Scales, Major Hoffman, Sergeant Pelletier, and certainly the ROTC students at Parkview High School for a compelling and moving 9/11 event that took place at their high school for all their students. Ms. Garner was there, along with our superintendent. It was a, a very moving ceremony, and we thank you for, for doing that and reminding our students, some of which weren't even born yet, what happened on that fateful day for our country. And I'd also like to thank the Board of Supervisors for the land purchase, and I am looking forward to moving ahead with plans and the construction of this new school. Thank you, Mr. Sturtevant.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. I agree with Mr. Edwards, Ms. Bailey, as well as all the other board members about teacher pay. Mr. Edwards pointed out that the location of the school may cost more. We can't decide, we can only request, so because of that, hopefully our board, working on this new budget, will put a teacher raise in the budget. So because of that, hopefully our board, working on this new budget, will put a teacher raise in the budget. That's the part we can do. If the supervisors approve it, um, then we've done our part. But if we don't ask for it, our teachers will never get, get it. So whatever number we need to come up with, um, it was their choice to put it there. And the supervisors have said they're going to try to do it right. They're going to put the money, it was 100 million, it's 120 million. So if they can go up 20 million dollars on the funding of a school, then there's a high probability they may give us an increase to address our teacher salary needs. I would like to thank all the staff, Central Office and our school staffs, as well as our teachers, for the great work they did during the storm. A lot of our staff had never experienced that. Some of the people in the community had never seen that much water at one time. So they were able to keep calm. I know Blue Stone Middle and Blue Stone High, I think both administrators experienced that, that tornado drill. That was probably a first for both of them. Anytime you get their alert on your phone, seek cover, you know it's serious at that point. Um, so we as a board, as we're planning our budget, let's put in a real number, what we need to increase our salary for our teachers and get the community behind us to fully support it. If we can do 120 million for construction, then if it's one to two million dollars increase in our budget, let's ask for that so we can finally address our teachers' needs. Um, and the last thing I want to point out is, I believe it's Mr. Honeycutt's birthday. Gavin? Happy birthday. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Gavin. Happy birthday to you.
Ms. Garner?
I would also like to thank the staff, the administration, everybody during the storm last week. Now, I have a little granddaughter that was at Chase City, Mr. Taylor. So I know they did a wonderful job. Under the circumstances, I don't think we've ever had anything like that before. So thank you very much.